You are watching XS Laporte County 1097. Coming up next is September 18th, 2024 meeting of the Laporte County Board of Commissioners Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounting.org.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Laporte County Commissioners Workshop. We'll be discussing the solar farm that we'll have, we have coming in.
Hi, I'm sorry. Kayla Sampson from RWE.
Okay. So you'll be doing the presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So once you get settled, then you can just go ahead and come up to the podium and then you can start your presentation. Okay, we're ready for you guys whenever you guys are ready.
Good evening. My name is Anne Smith. I am an in-house counsel with RWE for the Blue Stem Solar Project. I know that tonight we're talking about the road use agreement and the decommissioning agreement. And so I was tasked with coming here, talking to you about it, answering some questions, making sure that we have an understanding of, but the expectations for RWE and what we're going to do is Blue Stem Solar, but then also how the county can make sure that we uphold those expectations. So I have a presentation, you know, I went to law school. I'd love to sign a napkin and say, well, fix what we break, but that doesn't provide any clarity and that doesn't actually help you guys and it doesn't help the project. And so we have found these documents. We've worked on them. They're about 15 pages each. They are documents that have been used all across the state of Indiana for projects much like these, all across Illinois, all across the Midwest, and they're basically what the industry has found works best to make sure that the developer knows what's expected. The county knows how to hold them to that expectations and we can all keep roads safe and then eventually decommission the project properly. So we've taken those 15 pages. We've distilled them into a couple key points. And so we're just going to run through those really quickly and then really open it up for questions. I have the rest of the RWE team here, so any questions can be answered on the engineering level. That's not my specialty. I can speak to kind of the legalese of it. So we go through this. We'll start with. We'll start with the road use agreement. So the road use agreement has already resulted from a number of discussions with the offices of Laporte County Highway Department as to their expectations. And it's very similar to other ones seen across the state for developments like the Blue Stem Solar Farm. It has been reviewed and approved as to form by the county attorney. So this is not something that's new as of today. It's been in a lot of discussions. So the first key provision is Blue Stem is going to provide the county with a video narrative prepared by a third-party engineer of the roads prior to the start of construction. That lets us get the baseline, see what we're dealing with. The video allows for multiple angles, times what's actually happening on the roads. This is general practice, just so that we know what the baseline is, so we know what we're working towards. The second, oh, sorry. That's the baseline for both repair during and after construction. And then during construction, the roads have to remain safe. And so there is this idea of kind of minor repairs to ensure that the roads throughout construction stay safe. And then post-construction repairs, which are the fundamental bringing the roads back to that baseline. The next one is Shoal Road across the project haul route will be repaved with each phase of the project. We recognize this is a key route, and so that's a commitment that the project's willing to make. Really practically during construction, this is point number five, both Blue Stem and the highway superintendent are going to be in constant communication. We don't want to get in the way of school buses. We don't want to get in the way of, you know, emergency services, garbage recycling. And so it's, it's common practice to have constant meetings, be in communication with these items that we're not upending what normally goes on in Laporte County. And then prior to construction, in order to make sure that these repairs happen, we will post a third-party financial security. So this will be in the form of a letter, creditor bond, something the county could easily draw upon if there were ever any issues or if we failed to do what we needed to do at the end of project life. Then the next one, once we're done, once we believe the repairs are complete, we'll provide a second video narrative. And this will show that things are either back to the baseline or if they aren't back to the baseline, the county inspector will be made aware of that from the video narrative. That way they can adequately assess what needs to be done before you release any ties to that bond or call on that bond to make sure that it actually is done. The security can be drawn upon at any time. And so this is if there's an emergency unsafe situation during construction that Blue Stem is failing to remedy, the bond can be drawn upon. That way it can get fixed in a safe manner as soon as possible. And then the county inspector is both retained by the county but paid for by Blue Stem. We recognize that you would not be retaining an inspector if it weren't for this project, and so we are responsible for those fees. And then I think the final provisions are, you know, just really nitty-gritty items like if we're failing to keep the roads clean, safe, fines are also imposed. So not only is it our duty to fix them, but in cases where we are not being a responsible steward of it, fines can be imposed and then this doesn't bypass any frost laws or county speed limits. Those are still obligated to be complied with. And we provide a two-year warranty on improvement. So if the roads are fixed and those fixes don't stick, we are on the hook for two years to ensure that they are properly fixed. That does take us to the end of the road use agreement. Would we like to discuss that before moving on to decommissioning or get it all out at once and then?
It's your choice.
Any strong feelings? Let's go for it. Decommissioning agreement. This is another document. It's best practice. It's used by projects all across the state, all across the Midwest, and it is in compliance with the Indiana State Code as to requirements for decommissioning solar farms. It has also been reviewed and approved by the county attorney. So the couple key points here are as follows. We have to complete decommissioning within one year of the project ending. So as we start decommissioning, everything needs to be done within one year. Decommissioning includes both the removal of all the solar facilities, but also the stabilization, revegetation of the site. The goal that it goes back to producible agricultural land. Upon the commencement of construction, we will place a bond in a form satisfactory to the county that can be both drawn upon by the county and by landowners to cover 100% of removal costs. So that at any point, if the project is abandoned, if it stops producing electricity for a certain amount of time, the metal can be taken out of the ground, the ground can be rehabilitated, and everyone can move on. This 100% of the removal cost is determined by a licensed third-party engineer. It's not an internal RW engineer. It's an engineering firm that knows what they're doing with this, doesn't have a bias, and is able to give us a number to ensure that this is done correctly. That bond stays in place the entire life of the project. The next points, we have attached a form of the bond to the decommissioning agreement. You'll find it's, it's not like a credit card agreement. That's 32 pages and impossible to read. It's about two pages. It's relatively simple. The goal is that entities that need to draw on it can easily draw upon it and are not held up in red tape while metal is rusting in the ground or anything like that. And then knowing that costs change, inflation, but also the deterioration of the solar farm over long periods of time. Every five years, beginning at the start of construction, we'll reevaluate that amount and make sure that you have the proper amount so that it can be decommissioned at any point if there were an issue. Next ones. Again, the purpose of the bond, if we fail to decommission the project, either the county can decommission it or the landlords can decommission it pursuant to those bond funds. I think the next point's then. Get there. And then just some honestly boilerplate, but just to be very clear here, nothing in these agreements let us expand the project beyond what was approved in the special use permit. We can't add new parcels. We can't add new facilities. The decommissioning agreement, it's not an expansion of the permit. It's simply how we're going to actually enact the special use permit and make sure things are in order. And then as to whether if RW were to ever sell the project, there are assignment provisions in the decommissioning plan such that any party that we were to sell to would have to step into the shoes of RWE and uphold all of these obligations and then requirements as to the rating of the bond to make sure that it's worth the paper that it's written on and that they would have that bond in place prior to RW ever being released. So that if we sold it to some fly-by-night company, RW is still on the hook to make sure things get done. And then that's the end of the decommissioning. There's a couple slides, I think, to show the transportation route, which we can get into questions. But aside from that, I do have the team here who can speak to engineering, who can speak to project specifics. Would love to hear if there's any questions and how we can workshop these.
Just based on what you just said, um, you just said that if you were to sell the project, so is there a clause in there that you can sell the project?
There is. It would require the approval, I believe, of the county attorney to make sure that the bond is properly in place. All that to say, RW is owner-operator. We intend to operate this project well into the future. We have numerous projects we developed that we have continued to operate. Our model is not a flip, but.
Yeah, and there's multiple layers here too. So at its most basic level, if you went back to the actual findings of fact from the BZA, there is very strong language for the county. So we had back and forth with Doug Beegey about the potential in the future if RW was to sell the project. And his big concern was that RW has been vetted out. We don't want somebody else to come in here that hasn't been vetted out. So if you go back to the language in the findings.
Can I just ask, because I know who you are, but can you just state your name and that be just so that the public would know?
Anthony Novak. I'm an attorney with Newbie Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones in Laporte. I'm local counsel for RW. But the short of it is there's language in the actual permit that says if we're going to transfer the project to an unaffiliated entity of RW, we would have to come back in front of the BZA to get approval. So the, there's possibilities though, based off of financing and how they would fund the project, that affiliates of RW, wholly owned affiliates of RW would be involved. So there's, there's language in there that talks about if it would be transferred between those entities, but there's specific language within the actual permit approval that prohibits any third-party getting in there without the county's approval.
Okay.
Mr. Hollyfield? So at prior meetings, I heard you mention that some folks have come to you and they were concerned about some of the legalese in the agreements. Do you have any specific parts of the agreement that you would like RW to explain?
In the decommissioning on the county website where they just talked about they have to give approval. If I read this correctly, they have to give the county notice, but they do not have to seek approval is the way I read that. And if that's the way it is, that's not getting approval. That's them doing whatever the hell they want with a piece of paper and that's it. So that's one concern I have. This would be on page six C.
If I can, if I can review.
Mr. Hollyfield, thank you. Scott Pagek here. I just spoke with Mr. Novak about that. We need to see if there's a discrepancy between BZA approval as opposed to assuming it's approved, then it can be transferred within this decommissioning agreement. I would note for the public's edification that in the case that were to be transferred to a public utility or any other company or entity, that affiliate company should have a net worth of at least a minimum of $10 million as confirmed by financial statements. So it just can't be anyone in that circumstance. Sure.
Because we don't know anything about these companies. They're coming here anyway.
Correct.
They just popped up out of a doorstop. We have a weak ordinance. So then one other thing on the decommission on page nine, section three, compaction, they're going to do the compaction in the roads inside. I can assure you as a farmer my whole life, if they're doing construction out there and it's too rainy, but they want to work anyway because they don't care about the land and they drive through that land and create ruts, that's compaction. But according to this, they don't have to fix that and that compaction will be there forever and ever and ever. So.
Compaction on the road, if, just help me with this. Compaction on the road or compaction on the actual land that they're leasing?
On the actual land, because if they're, if they're driving along these roads, I watched them do the Bremen project, they're going back and forth there several times over the last year. There were some times out there they should not, a farmer would not have been in that land, but they were, and that compaction will remain there. I think the compaction removal should encompass the entire project, not just the roadway usage. And the only other thing that I had that I found that I'm really concerned about, section 2.3 would concern the bond. Why don't we keep this money? Because we've all seen banks fail. So if they give you a letter of credit from a bank, there's no guarantee that bank's going to be here in 20. None of us here would have signed this agreement today. None of us will be here at the end of this project. None of us will be here. And that's a concern a lot of us have had. So that's the concerns I had. Thank you.
On the first point, ultimately we'll make sure that the decommissioning agreement is consistent with the actual language in the permit. I'm trying to line it up. Some of the language that talks about assignment without county approval, but notice deals with the language that I brought up when it deals with a fully owned subsidiary or somebody that might be set up another RW-related company for financing purposes. And that was something that we talked to nauseam with Doug Beegey. And I believe I may have the actual, here's the language. Yes. I'm not sure if that language is consistent in there, but that is the idea there. But regardless, what we'll do is we can work with attorney DiMartino or Paycheck to make sure that the language in the approval of the permit would be consistent. Again, with the idea being that there'd be no assignment to an unrelated third-party that doesn't meet the parameters of this agreement, but to the extent it's a fully owned subsidiary for financing purposes, that that approval would be permitted. That's the idea.
Mr. Novak, can we, can we talk about the compaction issues that Mr. Hollyfield brought up?
Sure. Does anyone else speak on that a little bit more?
If I can just speak legally, the obligation is to restore the land the way it was. If it's deeply compacted, that is not the way it was. And so I think we have a landowner who actually wants.
So let me, let me ask you a question there. Why would the county, why would that be something that is the county versus the fee simple owners issue? If you're on my land and you compact it and it's not right, my claim personally is against you. You know, we're, you know, we still believe in fee simple, that that's really not the county's job.
To do with the county, that's ours. If I want to pave that thing, I can pave that thing, do anything with it. I want to right now.
Yeah, stick your name, please.
I'm Gene Smith, 0455 North, 250 East. The second thing is they're going to be planting this thing in the natural grasses. The grasses alone, if you read any farm magazine, will tell you that it's one of the ways to break up the soil compaction. And it's our ground. It's no different than taking silage out or anything else, driving a truck down through there. If it got ruined, it's ours. And they have deep tillage now for anything like that. So that'd be up to the farmer.
I have one question. May I, President?
Sure.
Or whoever might be able.
I'm sorry, Emily, or whoever might be able to answer this question. Someone did bring up to me recently a concern, and again, Mr. Smith and all the other landowners leasing their land, we understand this is not county property, notwithstanding, I think the county still has an interest in still maintaining agricultural areas as they have historically been used. So even if you did put a pavement or a parking lot on farm property, you still have to go through MS4. There's still things you do have to go with associated with the county. So in that spirit, not to infringe on any private property owner's rights. Concern was expressed to me whether or not there'd be any tremendous disruption or removal of topsoil because that's what matters for farming. So if you could maybe talk about topsoil, because some people were concerned that the end of the project life, the nutritious soil, for lack of a better explanation, obviously I'm a pencil pusher, not a farmer, but if you could talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, Kayla Sampson from RW. I'm the project developer right now. So with the topsoil issue, we are planning to minimize grading to the extent possible. We would like for the topsoil to remain largely in place over the lifetime of the project. And in the event that any topsoil must be removed, it will be stockpiled and redistributed over the site upon decommissioning of the project.
Thank you, because I just, we've gone through this agreement a lot. And I just realized on the first page of the decommissioning agreement, it does talk about revegetation of the site is necessary to minimize erosion, while doing things to minimize erosion doesn't have anything to do with integrity and maintaining the topsoil. So that's why I asked the question.
It's my understanding that we are planning to seed the entirety of the site with local pollinator species. And a mix has been developed by pheasants forever. And in order to seed that land and maintain that vegetation, we will be required to plant that in topsoil, I believe. Thank you.
Can, can somebody talk to the issue that Mr. Hollyfield brought up about the bond and should the bonding agency have a problem, what we would do about a subsequent bond?
So we have. We have investment-grade ratings of these bonds. In the event these bonds go under, we have much bigger issues than just Blue Stem Solar. We have committed to a bond of no less than an A-minus rating and then of a size seven company. And so that is an industry standard that is reputable, reliable, and that quite honestly, our nation is built upon this as a financing structure. We could look into a parent company guarantee if that felt like it was more sure for this project. But typically what we see is counties want bonds because they do trust these financial institutions more than they trust, you know, the parent company of the company that they're concerned might possibly go under.
So can we speak to that issue? So what you're really saying is you're going to want a financial bank-backed bond, either with an insurance company or another financial institution versus a corporate bond? I mean, because really, if you're looking at a company and a corporate bond has much more risk than a financial bond. Okay.
Yeah, and that's why these companies are rated so that, you know, counties like yours can sleep at night and be sure that there will always be the funds there for the decommissioning 50 years into the future.
Madam President, may I?
Sure, come on up.
Free things up.
When Mr. Paycheck and I spoke about this decommissioning bond earlier this year and a couple of the farmers that are involved in this, there are three things that we wanted to see in there that I don't see anywhere in there. Anything over 48 inches deep, they're just going to leave. Doesn't matter if it's concrete or anything else, the way I read that. There's no discussion about fertility of the ground. They talk about leaving this ground in the exact same way they found it. Well, if they're going to have weeds growing, and again, noxious weeds, if you don't keep this clipped off and mowed, noxious weeds take over. And then our CS handles noxious weeds in the poor kind, so they'll be informed as well too. And there's nothing about water testing to make sure they're not polluting the people's wells. Other counties have that in their decommissioning as well as their solar ordinance. So can they address those issues, please?
Again, am I wrong in understanding though, a lot of the issues that you're bringing up is actually the issues on the property, the owner's property and not that of on county.
Correct.
Anything that we own.
Right. Well, I mean, so the issue of vegetation would obviously be with the private property owner. The issue of contaminating neighboring wells might be a little bit of a broader issue.
Okay.
So it seems to be a mix. So if somebody wants to talk to those issues.
And also I seem to recall.
I just want to be able to separate the difference of what, what is landowner. Because again, we don't, we as a county don't want to infringe on property owners' land. So if, if you're farming your land, you have the right to, if you decide you own your land and you decide to farm no longer and go out and buy trees and put up a house right in the middle of your 40 acres, you have the right to do that. And so I just want to be careful that we're, we're listening to everyone's concerns, but that the county is addressing what is a county issue versus a homeowner's issue. And then if it becomes a homeowner's issue, I think that that becomes the problem of the homeowner with the weeds to, or the landowner to make sure that they get their land back in the condition that they, they entered an agreement that they were comfortable with and that they're getting. And then if they don't get the land back the way they were supposed to, it's really not the county's responsibility to step in. It's going to be the landowner to make sure that they work with that company and they get, they get their land back the way that they were supposed to. And I just want to separate.
We totally understand. And as we said from before, the property rights issue, no one's saying they don't have the right to do this. But you have a whole group of people now who are affected by this, whose property rights have been affected. So I still think that property rights issue is a little bit one-sided because I've never seen the constitution where it says you have the right to devalue and destroy someone's enjoyment of their property. So.
Mr. Hollyfield, but, but isn't, is that your claim or your neighbor's claim?
It's a lot of our neighbors up here.
Against the company as opposed to the county regulating that?
The county reg, no, it's, this project going through affects way more than just the personal landowner.
We understand that, but and I'm not here to argue either point. I just, we're just here for discussion. So we had a zoning ordinance, whether it was good, bad, indifferent, they've complied. If, if they come in and take over X's property and lease it and they do something that impacts the quiet enjoyment and the value of Y's property next to that, and it's some type of nuisance, it's Y's claim against the owner of X. And if there's an indemnity agreement between the owner of X and this company, that's a private matter between the two.
So they'll have to sue then for that. Okay. Because another issue is on private property rights. If I wanted to put in a thousand cow dairy herd or 100,000 pigs, the number of hoops I'd have to jump through would be more than a 30-second vote by three appointed people.
But hold on one second, but is that based on an ordinance?
It's based on state statute.
Okay, so that's, that's.
That's a difference there.
Ball of life. So that's the difference.
I just, these are just questions that are being brought up and just want to make sure on record.
Oh, yeah, and I'm trying to sort of.
I know, I'm listening. Alright, thanks.
So Mr. Hollyfield, real quick, I just want to make sure, because you said the weeds, the water, and then 48 inches, and what was the 48 inches?
Madam President. Required to remove anything at 48 inches depth below that, but if they put something at 49, they don't have to remove it according to that decommissioning.
Excuse me, Mr. Hollyfield, I'm sorry. That's something we did bring up in the past because I had that same question. And from my understanding, and I'll let Kayla answer it. I assume you know the answer better than I do. But the theory or intent of that was any structures below 48 inches, you would not want to disrupt the ground by digging that back up. So I'll let you speak to that, Kayla, but that was mentioned. We've gone over that before.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. So over the life of the project, it's going to be a long, it's going to be there for a long time. In the case that there are drain tiles or similar structures put in place below ground, but above that 48 inches, it would be a lot more disruptive and expensive and damaging to remove the equipment that is deeper than that length. That said, things like piles, panels, all of that will be removed since those are above ground, at least partially. Regarding weed management, Mr. Hollyfield, we will be managing the weeds, any invasive species. We will have mowers out there regularly to ensure that our native pollinators are kept in place throughout the life of the project. And regarding water, solar panels have not been shown to release any toxic chemicals into the water. These panels are made of silicon and glass. All of the materials are well enclosed within the glass. And if there are any broken panels, we will remove them, but even then tests have shown that there would be no leaching and there are no dangerous materials that could leach. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions in the audience or?
Okay.
If I could just clarify one thing, I had to go back to the findings of fact on this assignment, so I apologize for bringing it up again. But I just wanted to make sure I didn't make them a statement. So the findings of fact that were approved by the BZA, that was on June 18th of 2024, and we recorded those in July. It's subsection five that's relevant. It says that the special exception shall run with the land and is transferable in whole or in part, provided it's not expanded, extended, enlarged, or moved to a location pursuant to the county ordinance and provided that we would first receive prior written approval of the building commissioner. So it says that we're, it's transferable, but it still says that there's building. So it says that we're, it's transferable, but it still says that there's building commissioner oversight. So that would be a mic pull and oversight at this point in time. If Mike would deny that, and we thought it was without basis, we technically could then petition the BZA to get that transfer. Now, to then go to the decommissioning agreement, the language is actually consistent with that if, if we read it. So it talks, but it's the same policy I talked about with affiliates. So in, in, I just want to give you the right section. 5.4B, talking about it, an assignment with notice but without approval. If there is a change of control in internal ownership, so that would essentially be like if the shareholder percentages or the member percentages changed, the company would remain the same. In subsection C, it talks about assignments to affiliates or subsidiaries so long as the assany assumes all obligations and provides a removal bond, a new removal bond. And then another assignment with notice but without approval would be to a public utility, like if a NIPSCO took over this project. And then finally, if there was a company that had at least $10 million in assets. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you. Are there any questions on, anyone on Zoom? I don't see any hands up. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or any comments?
I think overall, I think most of our questions here have been answered. I know Commissioner Merzinski did, was involved quite a bit in the development of these two agreements. Do you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share with us, Commissioner Merzinski?
Yeah, I would say between Scott and Guy and myself and Anthony, either on Zoom meetings or in person, we have gone over both of these, especially the road use, five, six times probably, we've changed things. And I'm assured from attorneys that we're pretty, we're good. We're good with what we've got. We're, I, I, I can't think of anything else. Mr. Hollyfield brought up a couple of good points. Also, the thing we got here from the highway department. We'll probably be talking about that between now and our next meeting, but I, I see no reason why we should not have this on our next agenda for, for a vote.
Does anyone else have any other questions out in the audience?
Anyone on Zoom?
I don't believe anyone has their hands up from what I can see.
Might be a chelmene in the crowd. That's okay, I say what you guys.
Good evening, my name's Greg Hunt. And I've been around the water industry my whole life. And talk about polluting, you know, silicon is a conductor in a solar panel. And it needs phosphorus to make that become a conductor. And silicon makes up 26% of the earth's crust. And phosphorus is something we spread all over the, it's in a million tons of fertilizer for ag, it's, it's the middle number. And we spray for weeds, all kinds of stuff. And we are not helping our soil by all those methods. So I don't think these solar panels are gonna pollute. And if anybody would like to speak to me about this process in private, I'll be happy to talk to somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then I think we can, last call for anyone to come up and then we'll just conclude this workshop. Hearing no one, we'll conclude the workshop and we'll see everyone back at 6 o'clock for the commissioners' meeting. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.